We'll call it over the January 15, 25 Planning Commission meeting. We do have a quorum present. Did we have, Ms. Jacob, no one signed up for public comments? Do we have anybody in the audience or on the board that would like to pull anything off the consent agenda to review? And if not, I'll take a motion to pass the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Eva Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye. All right, moving on from the consent agenda. The next item on our agenda is the GDO on motion. It is a Fairfield by Marriott final design review and site plan review for a 65,000 square foot four-story hotel on 2.69 acres zone MU in GDO 1 located along Robert Rose Drive. Pradee Angatori or Angatree is the developer. Apologize.
Good afternoon. As you stated, this is the final design review and site plan review for the Fairfield by Marriott located at the intersection of Robert Rose Drive and Lothrick Way. This proposed hotel is located on the southern portion of the lot. The northern portion will be reserved for future development at this time. Site design team has worked well with staff and has provided the required parking, regular spaces, accessible spaces, as well as some EV charging stations as well to accommodate the hotel and support its operations. As you can see by the final staff report, almost all comments have been addressed at this time, so it is generally in good condition, and we would request that any approval be made subject to the remaining staff comments.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Barbie or the applicant?
If not, I move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Eva Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
All right, moving on to Platts and Plans. The first item is Mercury Park Blocks 4 and 5, site plan review for 29 multifamily residential dwelling units in eight buildings on 3.12 acres zone PUD located along Hancock Street and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Murfreesboro Housing Authority is the developer. And Ms. Smith, how are you?
Great, thank you Chair.
And I did want to cut in and confirm that that motion for the previous item was subject to staff comments.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
So, welcome. Good afternoon. This particular project you see up on the map is on Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. You might recall back in 2021, the Housing Authority brought before you a planned development that involved seven city blocks. If you haven't driven through the neighborhood lately, they are under construction on their Parkside Apartments, which is directly behind Patterson Complex on Castle Street that has two-story and three-story products, as well as a pocket park. They're also working on Minor Street near Bilbro where there's two city blocks with duplex and single-family detached homes, as well as some additional pocket parks in that section. So, once they're completed with that particular section, these are the next two city blocks that they're taking on. As you can see in the drawing here is the central area is an existing courtyard that a mandatory referral was previously done, and we will make sure that it is finalized in case that there's any remaining boundaries there. But in the project itself, it is looking at having some more of those single-family and duplex-type units similar to what's under construction over there on Minor Street. So here in looking at the layout, you can see along Minor Street those duplex and single-family detached buildings that all look like single-family. And then you'll notice there's Townhome Product as well incorporated along Dr. Martin Luther King. Buildings B and C are a sixplex and a tenplex. Those are only two-story buildings. And then there's another, this building A is another one of those sixplex buildings. Each of the areas has this kind of formal open space that runs between the project sites, similar to their other developments that they've been doing in the area. And you'll notice this connection point that comes back to our Patterson Park and the trail system that goes along there to have additional amenities for the residents. In looking at some of the improvements in those formal open spaces on Hancock at this central area, there'll be a Rover bus stop that has been approved and is now incorporated into their site plan review project. Again, this small walking track within. And then the units on this side of the street actually have individual polycart storage for their trash containers. This particular area, because there was no way to turn around, the site was too small. Staff worked very closely with our internal departments to make sure that would work, so they will have to pull those out on a weekly basis. But the other side of the street actually has a dumpster enclosure that would be a commercial service provided there. Mail kiosks are also incorporated into the site so that they can get that onsite. And then you will notice here we do have HVAC units and talking to them and trying to appropriately screen those. Those will be a little bit taller structures than what you see out in some of the other areas, but they'll be fully enclosed. So they actually have gates and be surrounded on all three sides. When they looked at where their entry points are, because they're kind of a shared entry point, there was not any opportunities to install those up in these front areas. Similar to their other developments, they're required only a 20-foot setback here along Martin Luther King and basically 10-foot setbacks on the other street sides. One of the changes that they did make from the planned development, Mary Minor change, is one of the units here looks like a duplex, but it's actually a single unit. Part of their grant requirements required a larger unit, so they needed to change that out, but staff wanted to make sure that we were maintaining these corner lots that were a little bit more articulated. So it's one of those wrap porches similar to what you see at the other project site. In reviewing it, it looks like the project is generally in conformance with our planned development approval. And here's the streetscape that you would see along Minor Street, which is a mixture of two-story and one-stories. And then again going to the townhouse product, here's the side portion of the building that actually would face the street, so a little bit more articulation. A lot of these buildings have a lot of brick, as well as hardy incorporated into them. And of special note, one of the units, the single-family duplex detached, they did need to incorporate brick. Again, one of their grant funding agencies requires a certain amount of brick on their buildings, so they make sure to run all the numbers to keep cost in line, but be able to meet the standards of those grant funding sources. And then here's the largest of the buildings, which is again a tenplex. That would be along Dr. Martin Luther King, it's a very long name, Jr. Boulevard. So with that, staff recommends approval of the project subject to the staff comments that are listed therein in the staff report. And Mr. Thomas Rowe is here from the Housing Authority if you have any questions on the project, and we're excited to see another two city blocks get renovated in our CCO.
Any questions from the board for Ms. Smith? Any discussion or questions or motions?
If there are none, I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Second.
Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Eva Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Thank you. That application is approved. The next item under Platts and Plans is Titan Material Handling, site plan for 23,346 square feet office and warehouse use on 3.14 acres zone, what is L, what is it?
Light Industrial.
Light Industrial, sorry, I thought it was L1. Light Industrial located along West Rutherford Boulevard. Titan Material Handling Incorporated is the developer. Ms. Smith?
Normally, this item would have been probably just on our administrative review portion, but as you see, the site location on the aerial above you is highlighted in yellow, is actually at the end of the current West Rutherford Boulevard end of the street. However, city plans and long-range improvement show the extension of West Rutherford here, as well as the extension to Rutledge to the north, and so this will not be a dead-end street in the long term for that. And what I wanted to share with you and the public is you can see the alignment here on this particular map, and again, that site location is right down here in the corner. And so they are working towards it, but the Titan project is ahead of the city's schedule for those streets and bridges and such moving forward. In looking at the project itself, it has an office space and industrial space. They are currently located within the city limits, but if I recall correctly, their space is a leased space, and so this one would actually be owned by the business, so they would no longer be in that lease operations. You can see here how they're laying out the particular street, and to the north is the alignment of that future extension of the roadway. And so we did want to mention that at a future point in time when that street does get constructed, the city would be responsible for connecting it should this portion of West Rutherford Boulevard be abandoned. But again, we're not that far into it, but we are aware in the future, and the applicant is aware as well. Standard landscaping requirements are met by the project, as well as parking predominantly up in the front area, as well as the side of the building. But the office is represented by this front portion of the building, so from an architecture basis, we always have that portion of the building much more articulated. You can see it here as the east elevation would be what faces Rutherford Boulevard. And then per our design guidelines, the building has building breaks every roughly 40 feet. It does not include any R-panel, but it does have a metal panel product in it, so we will make sure that that meets the city's standards for the new business. And then as you can see, zooming in, they predominantly have a dark brick base and then a little lighter brick to the top. And again, it's to meet the design guideline standards that require the office portion of the building to be predominantly brick-and-stone type of structures, and then metal is on the upper portions. And then here you can see the site plan layout for that office space and the warehouse, and they generally do rental of various vehicles, and we've actually classified this one as contractors' construction equipment, sales, rental, and repair, which is allowed in the LI district. If it was some of our other things, it might not be, but we did go ahead and make that determination. It is not a public hearing on this item, and I'm not sure if the applicant is here in the audience today, but it looks like their engineer is.
Just Mr. Taylor.
Just Mr. Taylor.
Only Matt.
Only Matt.
Yeah.
So with that, staff recommends approval of the project. It's in good order, subject to the staff comments listed therein.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smith. Any questions for Ms. Smith or the applicant?
If there are none, I move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Eva Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
That application passes, duh.
Thank you, Commission.
Thank you. The next item under staff reports and other business is a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a portion of a sanitary sewer easement located on property east of Casin Lane, SEC Incorporated on behalf of AR Nashville LLC applicant. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Chair Halliburton. So the subject mandatory referral before you today is located within Stonebridge at Three Rivers Phase 2C. This is just west of Casin Lane and along the private street, Stonewater Court. On the map that you see in front of you, it's the easement that's in question is the green area that's north of that TVA easement. So the request is to abandon a portion of a sanitary sewer easement that is currently in place. The Phase 2C of Stonebridge at Three Rivers was actually approved in December of 2024, so just the end of last year. Some backstory on this is the developer originally requested the abandonment of this easement, but since that time has added some additional area to that. That's the reason it's back before you today. The original request did receive approval from City Council in February of 2018. So the reason that this is being sought is to remove some conflicts that you can see that hatched area in red is the abandoned, the portion of the easement that's being requested to abandon. There are conflicts with the buildings that are proposed in Phase 2, so that would remove this. That easement was originally recorded in 2007 based on the route of a proposed sewer project. Since that time, sewer has been constructed. It was routed in a different area, so this easement is no longer required for that sewer. Water Resources Department has reviewed the request to abandon and relocate the easement and concurs with it, and the Water Resources Board will be reviewing this at their January 28 meeting. Staff recommends, the Plan Commission recommends approval of this request to the City Council, to the City Council, subject to the following conditions: the review and approval by the Water Resources Board prior to final consideration by City Council. If approved by City Council, the applicant will be responsible for providing necessary information to the legal department to prepare the instruments to abandon the easement, and then of course, they will be responsible for recording the quick claim deed to abandon the easement as well. And the legal instruments will be subject to the final review and approval of the legal department, and the applicant will also be responsible for that recorded and fee.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Any questions for Mr. Donovan? No questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second. Have a motion and second.
Ms. Eva Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
The next item on our agenda is a mandatory referral to consider miscellaneous easement actions associated with the Town Creek project along Northwest Broad Street and Hickerson Drive, including the abandonment and dedication of various utility and drainage easements and the dedication of a conservation easement. The City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Mr. Moore, good to see you.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission. I'll kind of summarize, this is a mandatory referral, but it's, the miscellaneous is a good word in that description. But I just want to give you a real quick update. This is obviously for the Town Creek project. Just so you know, we've awarded this contract, you're probably aware, in December to be constructed by SBW Constructors. And we're still working through some permitting on that, on this project. That includes basically an A-Wrap permit through TDEC, and that's really why I'm before you today. There's kind of two things that I want you to think about as we consider this item. In order to work the creek, we need an A-Wrap to work in the creek. That's something that's required by TDEC. And as part of this A-Wrap, TDEC is requesting the project have a, provide a conservation easement, a buffer, you know, similar to a buffer, but it is a drafted, it is a recorded document that is a conservation easement around the corridor of the stream itself. It'll cover, this easement will cover approximately 2.3 acres of the city-owned land, and it will be restricted from certain land uses. We have drafted a proposed conservation easement and that, let's just read what I have here. Proposed conservation easement has been drafted to provide the city with certain rights for maintenance of the existing and proposed easements that are within this corridor and associated infrastructure. There are some restricted uses that will include land modifications to the channel and portions of the land associated with and adjacent to the channel. So that's kind of big picture number one. Conservation easement, we need, we are in the process, we would like to negotiate with TDEC what this conservation easement looks like. And so we've got a draft document. Mr. Tully here has been working with us and the legal department to get that document drafted. So that's kind of item number one is looking, we're coming today asking you, we'd like to negotiate with TDEC on this conservation easement. In addition to the need of conservation easement, there are multiple utility easements along this corridor that will need to be abandoned and/or put in place. There's a lot of easements along corridor, there's a lot of old easements that are there. Utilities are going to be shifted around, so this is kind of an ask to abandon those easements, and then there's some smaller areas of easements that we need for new Having the document, an exhibit that shows, I'll just give you a quick look at that, and obviously if you have questions, please let me know. There's two pages to this. One is what I'll refer to as Phase 2, which is on the screen. This is from South Church Street to South Front Street. This is the longer portion that's right across from City Hall, and then there's the Phase 1 side, which is behind McDonald's. This is McDonald's here. And that hatched area there is a representation of what we have, we want to submit to TDEC and say, here's where we propose the conservation easement B. And that is effectively, I'll tell you, the stream itself is going to be, there's going to be a lot of retaining walls that are really going to define that stream area, and that's pretty much what you're looking at when you see this hatched area. That's kind of the outline roughly of where the retaining walls will be, and below those walls, there'll be the stream. You'll have areas above the walls where there can be activity, park-like activity, as well as the plazas on both ends of the project. Those will be elevated as well. So that's the representation of the conservation easement area that we're going to, we would like to present to TDEC. There also, it's a very busy document, but it tried to simplify what's been represented in the construction plans that have been approved by Planning Commission back in July, I believe, of last year. But it's, to summarize the easements we need to abandon, there's an easement now for the existing culvert system that runs from Discovery Center, Murphy Springs, to Canonsburg, so there's easement there that needs to go away. There's multiple drainage easements that tie into that that are going to be moved or relocated, so that's what this document is representing. So really, the ask today is two things. One, we want to be able to negotiate with TDEC the dedication of conservation easement that covers Town Creek with an area substantially similar to this proposed conservation easement that you see before you, and those terms are to be approved by the city attorney as well as city council. So once we negotiate with TDEC, our legal feels like, and we feel like we're good, then we'll bring that back to city council, make sure that everybody signs off on what has been negotiated with the easement. I have included that easement document in your package, and certainly we can, I can give you some highlights of that if wanted. I'll give you a rough overview, you know, this won't hinder anything that we have opportunities we have planned for those nodes on either end with the plaza. It really is just limiting kind of what we can do in that conservation easement area. We'll be able to maintain the area from a landscaping-type perspective, but kind of basically keep it in a natural state is the goal. So that's kind of the first thing. The second thing is we would like to go ahead and ask for the dedication of easements on the subject property substantially similar to those identified on this exhibit and as well represented in the construction plans. And then the abandonment of easements on the subject property substantially similar to those identified on the attached exhibit. So it's a lot to take in, so obviously if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
I have two. What is an A-Wrap?
It is an aquatic resources alteration permit, and it is a requirement by the state per Section 401 of the water quality certification. It's a permit basically that allows you to work in streams, basically.
Second question, you're talking about, of course, the whole idea is opening this up, it's going to be, I'll call it a channel, it sounds like it's going to have concrete walls that are holding it in. Are you going to be able to see this from the road, or is it going to be so that the depth of this channel is so low, you're not going to be able to see the water?
That's a good question. I think you will, there will be locations that you will certainly be able to see it from the road, Mr. Halliburton. The reason for the walls, and I'll just point out a couple of areas to you here, this area right in here, of course, the stream is generally centered within that hatched area. And, you know, some of these areas, this area with the number 215, by the way, that is the street address, just if you're wondering. This area over here, 219 area, those areas will be elevated, but not necessarily as much, because we'll be able to get grade down to the stream from the road, if you will. But there will be some areas you should be able to see the stream from the road, but we've got a 10-feet drop, basically, what Broad Street and the creek, and that's not really anything we had a choice in, it's just because Murphy Springs is at this point and Canonsburg is at this point, and it's pretty flat between the two. So the stream elevation, the profile of that stream is set, and with the narrowness of the corridor, you can see through here, and a 10-feet elevation difference, there's walls that just, it's going to have to happen to get that.
I just think you're, I'm not an engineer by any stretch of imagination, but this is such a neat deal, you hate to lose the whole ambiance or the look of it if you can't even see it, you know?
And we do have opportunity, and again, this isn't the best exhibit, Mr. Halliburton, to represent this. We've had maybe exhibits before where we've had conceptual, but there's opportunity for, there's a beach area right in here where you can walk down from the plaza area on this end and come down and enter into the stream. So this is, these are, there's not walls around all this hatched area. There are a lot of walls. I'm not going to, not going to tell you that there aren't, but there are opportunities to get down into the stream up in this area. Obviously, on this end down here, there's some opportunity to get down in the stream, but the walls are being, are required really because of the narrowness of that corridor and then that drop, that 10-feet drop. So, good questions.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Moore? If there are none, is there a motion?
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments. Are there staff comments on staff's application? Still unclear on that.
I think, yeah, I guess there are. I mean, it's really, again, you're, what we're asking for is to, for us to negotiate, continue to negotiate the conservation easement restrictions and opportunities that document with TDEC. And then the other thing is approval of the abandonment and proposed easements within that corridor as represented. So I don't, I don't know if there's any further staff comments.
No, I don't think so.
We can, we can add that too, though, Ms. Eva Water.
Never hurts.
That might still, it won't hurt, I don't think.
Second.
Yeah, I'll second. Let's get it going.
All right, Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Eva Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll? I'm sorry, Mr. Wright?
Aye.
And we appreciate Mr. Moore's leadership on this project. He's been managing it. He represents the city well with this project. He's put in a lot of hard work, and I know it's a labor of love for him because it's a lot to coordinate, and we appreciate what he's doing.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other business to come before the Planning Commission? Yes, sir.
I do have a couple of items. As the Planning Commission could see, we had no items of new business today to schedule for a public hearing for February the 5th, and unless there's any objection by the Planning Commission, rather than try to come up with items to put on there, we figured we would probably, if it's, if it's okay with y'all to cancel- y'all to cancel the meeting on February the 5th. I know, I know. Hey, we'll save money in the food budget as well, so.
Wait, you're canceling a night? Has that ever happened?
I don't know. Not since I've been here. We had, we had kind of a lighter submittal in December, and I think that's, you know, possibly a little bit due to the holidays. So, I'd say enjoy it now because I think, I think we're fixing to get a, a new big load of submittals coming in tomorrow at our monthly deadline.
Also, I just remind, I got an email for the financial disclosure, so you, y'all may want to make sure you get that done.
Yes, yes. That's a, that's a good reminder, Mr. Halliburton. Of course, that's due, I think, by January the 31st. And we would appreciate y'all getting those back in. The other item of other business that I wanted to bring up is a little bit of a sad one. Today is Mr. Roman Hankins' last planning commission meeting with, with the city. His last day will be on Friday, and I wanted to personally say that it has been an honor to work with him. He is, he has continued Mr. Ives' tradition of just being an excellent representative from the legal department to help the planning department with our many, many, many issues. And he is a wealth of knowledge, detailed, does very, very thorough legal analyses. And I'd say his, his random knowledge is unparalleled except by Mr. Sam Huddleston. And, and so, we, we really appreciate the job that he's done. He is going into the private sector, opening his own legal consulting business, and we wish him nothing but the best in that. But at the same time, we know that everything will be in good hands with Mr. Tully over here, who is also doing a great job for us as well.
Good luck. Thank you for everything you've done with, for us.
Thank you all. I'll miss you all.
Is that it?
That's all I have.
All right. With that, we're adjourned.